The race for Midland City Council District 3. You're watching the debate live from the Anwar Family Studio at Basin PBS. Moderated by Pat Canty and Mary Kate Hamilton. Presented by Diamondback Energy, supported by Bird Ranch.
Good evening and welcome to Basin PBS. We're coming to you live from the Anwar Family Studio. Tonight's program is brought to you by our generous sponsors, Diamondback Energy and Bird Ranch. I'm Pat Canty. On behalf of Basin PBS, thank you for joining us tonight. We're honored to host the Midland District 3 City Council Debate. Basin PBS is known for quality broadcasting and programming, where we provide not only education, but also entertainment. Tonight's program is a culmination of our mission to educate as well as inform. We are thrilled to have a small studio audience and all of you, our Basin PBS supporters watching at home on channels 13 or 36, or live on our Facebook page or YouTube channel. Joining me tonight at the moderator's desk is Mary Kate Hamilton with First Alert 7.
Thank you, Pat. Tonight's debate will be 60 minutes in length with one two-minute break. Our questions were developed by our team of moderators, a small representation from the community, and our Facebook page, where our community will be given the opportunity to submit questions. We will do everything we can to answer those questions. And we've asked our candidates to also visit the Basin PBS social media page after tonight's program and answer your questions further. Now for the rules. The debate will begin with each candidate in order of how they're listed on the ballot, and two minutes for opening remarks. After these opening remarks, the moderators will pose a series of general questions. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. In the event a candidate's answer to a question invokes the name or a policy position of one or more opponents, the moderators, at our sole discretion, will give the referenced candidate 30 seconds to respond. It is important to note, an individual candidate may also be asked a direct question. That may be because of a statement or a policy position he or she has made during their campaign. The candidate will have one minute to answer that direct question. The 30-second rebuttal rule will still apply. At the conclusion of the questions, each candidate will be given two minutes, time permitting, for closing statements. You do not have to use all the time you're given, but it is encouraged. You do so as this is your time to let your constituents know your stance on policies. This will also be a live broadcast, so flash photography, making loud noises, or other disruptive actions or comments are not permitted. If you are part of our live studio audience, photography and video is limited to phone use as to not distract from the program. And now, let's get started and meet our candidates for Midland's City Council District 3. Councilman Jack Ladd.
Evening.
Mrs. Shandy Williams.
Good evening.
And Mr. Cheston Blank.
Good evening.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We'll now begin with opening statements. I'd like to remind the candidates that each of you will have two minutes. Councilman Ladd, we'll start with you, your opening statement.
Thank you, Mary Kate. My name is Jack Ladd. I'm your current sitting Midland City Council member for District 3. I'm a fourth-generation Midlander. I went to Goddard and Midland High School, and I'm also an Eagle Scout. I attended the University of Texas at Austin. After that, I went to Texas Tech University, where I got my Juris Doctor and MBA simultaneously. After my time there, I served at the, I served at the pleasure of Senator Kay Bailey Hutchison in her Washington DC office. After that, I ran several, several successful Republican campaigns across the state of Texas, including for Tryon Lewis and Congressman Michael McCall. I am happy to have been married to my wife for the past 10 years. We have two wonderful little girls, Pepper, who is two, and Abigail, who is eight months. Hi, little girls. My wife and I decided that we did not want to live in a big city to raise our children. Specifically, we wanted to live in the biggest small town in America, Midland, Texas. A place that has big-city amenities, but still, you know everyone in town. A place that has a Costco and maybe someday a Trader Joe's, but only takes 10 minutes to get there. A place where you can run into your mayor at HEB one week and watch her on the national news talking to the Secretary of Energy the next. A place where you know your doctor, sure, but you know them well enough that you have their cellphone number. What I seek is to continue that legacy for the city of Midland. We want it to grow. We want it to expand, but we don't want it to lose its character and its culture that makes it so, so great. Specifically, a place with wonderful roads, safe homes, and low taxes. For that, I ask you to vote for me on January 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. And Mrs. Williams, your opening statement.
Hi, I'm Shandy Williams. I'm a third-generation Midlander. One of the things I never thought I would do was be running in politics, but the Lord has brought me here, and so this, I must continue the path. I am a devoted Christian, mother, and wife. After 13 years of homeschooling my beautiful children at Midland Classical Academy, they've moved to upper school, so I have a lot of free time on my hands, you could say. But I'm also a small business owner, so I know what it means to build small things up to great things. I know what it means to empower people, to put them into leadership, so that you're not micromanaging things. And that's something that we don't quite have yet at city councils. So I took this role to step into is to make things great. Being a third-generation Midlander, I know exactly what Midland has to offer and what Midland has had to offer. And we've strayed away from it. We've become more corporate America. The taxes are raising. There's an infrastructure that needs crisis situation. It needs dire attention right now. That's our water and our roads. And I want to make a change in these things, because it's affecting people's lives. It's affecting people that I know, that I don't know, I've only just met. The stories are horrendous. And I want to make sure that every Midlander has the opportunity to live in Midland without being overrun by overpriced taxes, roads that are tearing up cars, or lack of water. That is a true concern for me. As, as a small business owner, I know exactly what it is like to have something and, and watch it grow. But I know you can't call it an accomplishment until it's hit that mark or that level that you expected it to. And I'm happy to say that I own one of the largest tourist attractions in the Gulf Coast. I'm Shandy Williams, and I'm looking for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Blank, your opening statement.
Hello. My name is Cheston Blank. I am running for your city council District 3, and I am a merchandiser at Goodwill, a member of the Midland Rotary and the Westside Lions Club. I am running because Midland kind of sucks to live in, and I want to make it better. It's a, it's, the city is built, is in a way that's actually hostile to people that don't have money. You know? I want to make sure that people can afford to live in the place they live. So I want to make, you want, and the two major costs of living is the price of houses and the price of transportation, which, you know, not a lot of other people have mentioned so far. And yeah, I'm improvising this if you don't know. So, and I would see to do this by making it easier to build more affordable housing by changing zoning regulations and funding public transportation. So you're able, you know, that would reduce traffic, make places more accessible, more jobs, and it's more convenient to go around the city. And those are the main two prongs of my platform.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blank.
So we'll now begin with our first question. What do you believe is the single greatest challenge facing District 3? And please just choose one, and we'll start with you, Councilman Ladd.
Well, it's hard to choose just one after doing this for six years. But if I had to choose one, I would say it's the one that faces our entire community, which is water. Now, since being on council, we have successfully secured 100 years of water to the city of Midland, which we're very proud of. And we did so by restructuring contracts with the CRMWD. And we also did so by doing things like redesigning our Paul Davis Water Field, which produces 13 million gallons a day of water, and working together with Abilene and with San Angelo to create the Fort Stockton Pipeline, which will provide replenishable water sources to the city of Midland for the next 100 years, as I stated. So if I had to pick just one, it would be water.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
I agree. Water is a, in dire straits, infrastructure that we need. But however, I do agree with Mr. Ladd. We may have secured a 100-year deal in water. However, these touts and claims of the Paul Davis Field, that is not even drinkable water. We're going to have to have the infrastructure in place, because that is high arsenic fields. So we can't be claiming that as, as part of our success, because it's not there yet. Number two, we don't have the infrastructure. We learned this in March of 2025. We don't have the infrastructure in place for water. We have a 70-mile pipeline from T-Bar-N. There was a specific valve on that pipeline during the zebra muscle infestation, which was not shocking to us. We've had that infestation for quite some time and just failed to deal with it. But when that valve failed, it was a 40-year valve, and it had only been there for 13 years. So if we're not maintaining annually, biannually, maintaining our water infrastructure, that doesn't matter how much water you have if you can't get it.
Thank you.
If I could really briefly.
30-second rebuttal.
Just, just to clarify, what she's referring to was a one-day incident. We never had to have a boil water notice. We're very proud of the redundancies that have been put in place since then. And to counter what she said about the Paul Davis Water Field, the technology is there. We do have the infrastructure in place, and we will soon be producing that water at the rates that I described, without arsenic.
Thank you. Mr. Blank, your turn to answer.
I will ensure that water is a priority, but I want to talk about what I think is the greatest priority in all of Midland, which is housing. Rents and mortgages are unaffordable, and they're too expensive for people to live in. And I want to, and one of the reasons why it's so expensive to maintain infrastructure is because we keep expanding Midland. You know, I want to focus with, in the land that we already have in my own district. So we can, so if we develop, build more land, build more businesses, and, you know, densify District 3, we don't have to spend money on everywhere else, because we have the supply in Midland. And that keeps infrastructure costs down, because you have more commerce, more people in one single space, which is less money to maintain, as opposed to expanding west and east and north. You know, so I want amenities here, and we do that by building more housing. And that makes infrastructure cheaper.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blank. Well, two of you have touched on this. You seem to have read our minds, but we're going to dig a little bit deeper. The 100-year water security plan, the Fort Stockton Water Deal, reactivating the Paul Davis Well Field. They were said to have secured water supplies for over 100 years, but some community members still have questions. So can you each explain how secure you believe Midland's future water supply is? And then furthermore, what specifically you could or would do to make it even more dependable? Mrs. Williams, we'll start with you.
Wonderful. So that is a really great question. So we are touting on a 100-year water claim. For how many people is that? Is that going off the 140,000 people? Or the recently updated 157,000 that we really believe to be about 165,000? How many people is this 100-year water claim for? We already know with the situation that's arisen in Greenwood is that we have, we have no regulations with the Midland Environmental District. They are not going and checking for the, all of this. We've got contamination, raw sewage, oil field runoff. Whatever it is, you name it, it's in our water right now. So we need to clean up our water. And we did have, north of Midland, I'm sorry, west of Midland is the ones who were without water out by the ballpark for almost a month. We were under a boil notice the entire time. So that is actually a false claim, and I'm sure everybody can remember back to that time in March. We were two days from being in a crisis, complete shutdown, by having no water per Councilman Burkhilder.
Mr. Blank.
Well, I hope we solve this issue by not repeating the mistakes of the past. Midland is, Midland gets its water from the Alulah Aquifer, which is one of the largest aquifers in the nation, right? But it's, you know, it's being drained more than it's being replenished, because, well, we have industrial activity, but also, we're in, living in a desert, and people aren't acting like it. And one reason I have to, sorry, I haven't looked into this more, but when I talked to one of the water people over at the city, one of the reasons why we lacked water is because one of our contract with our previous water supplier mandated that we use a certain amount of water every year, you know, in order to, you have to use a certain amount of water every year. You know, so solutions such as mandating like dry lawns, you know, drip irrigation, you know, things that, and water, and desert plants, you know, ways to reduce water and ways to recycle water. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Ladd.
Let me answer the question of how many people were serving with water. That is the precise amount of people that live within the city limits of Midland. Greenwood is not inside the city limits of Midland. It is in the county. We at the city do not provide water to Greenwood. On top of that, I'd like to tout that what we have done by renegotiating the CRMWD contract, and we got rid of the take-or-pay clause, which was costing city of Midland folk millions of dollars a year in unnecessary expenses. By getting rid of that take-or-pay clause, we saved the citizens $100 million over the next 30 years. And we're really proud of what we've accomplished, and I believe that I can proudly tout that we have 100 years of drinkable water security.
Can I rebuttal?
I don't believe he directly.
I don't think he directly referred to.
My policy?
Is Greenwood water your policy?
Yes.
Okay.
It is? Okay.
So one of the things that I want to remind all Midlanders is we are constantly growing. We discussed this last night. We are in an incredible baby boom. And so do we have enough water for our constituents? That's the question that you're going to have to ask. Those are the hard questions we don't have answers to. So claiming or touting that we have a 100-year water solution is giving us false insecurity and hope.
Okay, thank you. Transparency has been a point of discussion amongst many voters this election cycle, with some suggesting that Midland City Council meetings should be moved to the evenings to give more citizens an opportunity to attend. Would you support this change? And please explain why or why not. And we'll start with you, Mr. Blank.
So I'll open to like, absolutely. We should move it to 6:00 PM, as they do in Odessa, to make it more accessible to the most people. And not only that, maybe we should hold it in the stadium, so most people can attend in person. And, but I will be open to like, it's mentioned before by other city council members that like, a lot of the times, it's convenient for them, because they have family at home. You know, so I'm open to compromises or, you know, they're changing my mind. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Next, Councilman Ladd.
Yes, I'm, I'm very proud of our transparency, since I've been on council the last six years. In fact, the city of Midland, as was stated last night by Mayor Blong, recently won an award for transparency. We have posted our budget to the website every single month. We all, on top of that, have posted our agenda, the descriptions of that agenda. And one of the things as a councilman that I have to do is I have to go over 1,000 or 2,000 pages of documents before a council meeting. All of those are available to the public ahead of time. And as for moving the city council meeting to 6:00 PM, I'm not opposed to that. We did do a test run on that recently, and almost nobody showed up. But there are additional problems with overtime for city staff, so it'd be something I'd want to look at more clearly.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Williams.
So I do believe transparency has been a huge issue, and I believe that all Midlanders deserve answers, because with transparency, we have accountability. With accountability, we have trust. Right now, we currently have the city Midland of Council meeting behind closed doors. MDC is coming. Their legal agreements are already signed and attached to agendas without any public input. So I do believe if we were able to have not only the meetings moved to the evenings, more Midlanders would be able to attend, we would also be able to have the public comment section moved before any items or agendas were approved. Because I believe, as a Midlander, we all have a say in what is being approved in our city and what is not being approved. What we should spend money on and allocate here or there, whatever the situation may be, every Midlander should have a voice in it. And that is where we have been silenced. We are no longer allowed doing public comments at the beginning, they're at the very end. Once all decisions on that agenda have been discussed, then we have public comments.
Can I make a statement to that? She said we silenced them?
Yes.
Okay. So as for being silenced in the public comment period, there are any, any given number of 40 agenda items on any given council meeting, if any person comes in, no matter what the order of those questions and requests to speak to that particular issue, you can speak to it immediately. And as for having the public comment period at the end and not the beginning, the goal is to get to the city business first, so address what is in front of us, so that then we can have the public comment period and address new business.
Quality of place is often discussed in Midland, and the ways in which city leaders can continue to make Midland a desirable place to live and raise their families. So what does quality of place mean to you? And how would you improve it in District 3? Councilman Ladd, we'll start with you.
Well, we, we've made quality of place been a hallmark of my candidacy, and not only my candidacy, my tenure on council. Since I've been on council, we have created the Beal Soccer Complex with 62 new fields. Reyes Mashburn has six tournament-ready fields. The Midland Athletic Syndicate, which is a public-private partnership, spent $42 million of private investment for a volleyball, a wonderful volleyball facility. And just today, we cut the ribbon on what is, I consider my crown jewel of my candidacy and my term in office, which is the Wildcatter Trail, a hike-and-bike trail that will go from the Midland Sports Complex all the way to UTPB in Odessa. We're very excited about the quality of place and where it's going in Midland.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Williams.
So I do believe that Midland is on track to have a better quality of life. The Wildcatter Trail was a great idea. That is keeping our cyclists safe, our hikers safe, and everyone who is into outdoor sports or athletics safe. However, what we don't have is we're not pouring into our youth currently. We've got a very high rate of urban gangs. And with lack of firemen, lack of police officers, we can't keep our community safe. We're currently 42 police officers short. We're currently 19 firemen short. This is not only just a safety issue for us as citizens, this is a safety issue for the departments as well. In order for us to have a quality of life here, we need to have safety. We need to be taking care of our first responders. Their drill field has been condemned on 307. So what does that mean for recruitment? Is that bringing anybody new into Midland? Unfortunately, I don't believe so. So let's take care of safety before we take care of excessive ballfields for people to play in. Let's take care of our youth.
May I respond to that?
Yes.
Okay, so she brought up 42 police officers short. First off, when I was running six years ago, it was 50 officers short. Since then, since I've been in office, we have recruited 33 new police officers from across the country. So I don't know where she's getting those numbers from. And as for our police and fire department, they're some of the best-funded and well-taken-care-of departments in our entire city and in our entire state. I'm proud of the work they've done and have accomplished. And I'm, I'm also proud to have served on the committee that helped solve the fireman pension crisis.
Can I rebuttal his, where I got my information from?
Unfortunately, we don't do rebuttals for rebuttals.
No rebuttals to a rebuttal, but thank you for asking.
No, that's fine.
Mr. Blank, what does quality of place mean to you?
Quality of place means you have a place, you know, to live, you know, sorry. And two is, one thing about safety is safety on the roads. You know, you should be able to cross the street without, you know, risking your life. You know, this morning, you know, we need narrow roads. We need protected bike intersections. We need, we need to make sure that people that are crossing the street, and non-cyclists, are safe. And that means genuine investment in the infrastructure within the city, not just in between Midland and Odessa. You know, the Wildcatter Trail was $4 million of state funds for the intercity trail, right? But no, but you can't, that one makes sense. If there's no, like, it protected infrastructure within the city to get to Odessa. Like, what are you going to do once you're there? And it's not safe for cyclists. It's not safe, you know, so. And today, you know, I was in a, sorry.
Okay. The city of Midland has a 2025 budget of over $460 million. When it comes to spending and investing, what do you believe is most important? And with that, we'll start with you, Ms. Williams.
So for $465 million budget, I believe that what we should be investing in should be for the people. What do you want 465 million invested in? Is it back into your quality of life? Is it for lowering taxes and appraisal value, not just one? Where it comes out mediocre and you're paying the same amount? Is it money back into your pocket? Is it actually roads that aren't like a wave? What, what is important to the citizens? Through my time here, I have been doing a lot of reaching out to constituents, and all of them seem to have one thing in mind. They want to make sure that Midland is going to be ready for the next three generations down the road. Decades to come, they want to see Midland thriving. And that's what we need to be putting our money back into. One of the things we need to do is going to be our first responders. Without them, we can't do anything. Number two, we need to pour into our youth. Our youth is the future of Midland. This is who will be our future leaders standing up here before us today.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next, Mr. Blank.
Would you please repeat the question?
Sure. The city of Midland has a 2025 budget of over $460 million. When it comes to spending and investing, what do you believe is most important?
What's most important is transportation. We need to make sure the roads are safe, and we need to make sure people have access to where they go. We should, we should put our money within transport, within public transit. I arrived here on public transit, because it lasts to 7:10, 7:10 PM. But I don't have a ride home. Many people depend on it, and it's, it's an investment. It's not a waste of money. It's not more expensive than driving, because the cost of, like, individual, it's just externalized. It's not cheap. So.
Thank you. And Councilman Ladd.
Yes, so since I've been on council, one of the things that we had to address was the subsidization of enterprise fund activities, such as the airports and golf courses. That's just examples. And those, what we were currently, what we were doing when I got there was that taxpayers were funneling money from the general fund into those projects, when really, it's the users that should be paying for those fees. And that's exactly what we changed. What we did was we made sure the airport pays for the airport, that if a mom, a single mom is out there that's not using the airport, then she is not paying for the airport. If there's a, a young person out there that doesn't play golf, he's not playing for the golf course. And when that happened, when we stopped subsidizing those enterprise funds, we found a whole new source of income to pay for roads, utilities, water, and of course, our fire and police. So it's also about leveraging money where it's available. So for example, taking example, taking advantage of the MDC, paying $1 million, again, $16 million return for Todd Rowe.
Very much. We need to take a short station break, but when we come back, we'll hear more from our Midland City Council District 3 candidates.
In a world where every conversation can feel like a challenge, how do we come together? Join Basin PBS for a special town hall, communicating with civility in 2025. Learn how to listen with openness, share with respect, and strengthen understanding in our community. Have questions? Ask them before or during the town hall on the Basin PBS Facebook page. Tune into Basin PBS or stream live on Facebook or YouTube, Tuesday, October 21st at 7:00 PM. Because change begins with how we speak and how we listen. Tune in for Hunger Has No Face, a Basin PBS documentary on the West Texas Food Bank, Thursday, October 16th at 7:00 PM. Get ready for a Spooktacular Saturday at Basin PBS. Join us Saturday, October 25th, from 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM at Basin PBS, 203 North Main in Midland, for a full day of fun. We'll watch a Halloween-inspired PBS Kids episode, make a creepy cute craft, and enjoy some tasty snacks. Costumes are optional, but fun is guaranteed. It's the Saturday Spooktacular, only at Basin PBS. This holiday season, the spotlight is on you. Basin PBS invites singers, dancers, musicians, and bands to audition for Christmas on Main Street. A holiday tradition, bringing our communities together. Auditions are October 17th or 18th at Basin PBS. Prepare one holiday song or performance, two minutes or less, and share your talent, your joy, and your holiday spirit. Scan the QR code or visit basinpbs.org, or call 432-563-5728 for details and to sign up. Be part of Christmas on Main Street. Be part of Christmas on Main Street from Basin PBS.
Welcome back. We are coming to you live from Basin PBS in the Onwar Family Studio. I'd like to remind our candidates that the rules, as mentioned at the beginning of our program, still apply. I'd also like to remind our viewers that this is the District Three City Council debate. We're gonna get right back into it. You will be elected to represent District Three and serve among a larger council. Do you believe you have the temperament to serve on Midland City Council and the ability to have discussions with fellow council members and other city and county officials and employees you may disagree with? Mr. Blank, we'll start with you.
Well, I'll try my best. That's all I wanna say.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Councilman Lad?
Yes, I, I feel like that's been a talent of mine my whole life, is to help people get along and make sure that we work together as a team. I feel like I've done that my six years on council, but more importantly, I feel like what we've done on council is actually work well with the other city governments, like the county. Currently, we have 16 projects working with the county that helps us leverage money that would otherwise not come to, not work together, to get state money and federal dollars. So that has been a huge use. You have to get along with your other city governments. As far as my relationship with MISD, Stephanie Howard was my high school debate coach, so we have a pretty good relationship. And so I, I just think that that's the most important thing, and currently, I think we have the best council we've ever had my six years on there. We work together as a team, and we work well as a team.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Williams?
Thank you. So that is one thing. I am a very, very passionate fighter. I fight for the people. And if you've ever seen a video of me circulating, you know that I am that. I am a fighter. I am passionate. And I was a constituent. Now, the way you hold yourself as a city council member is gonna be completely different, and I hope that the constituents would hold me to the same regard that I held county commissioners to back in July. One of the things that I know is I am able to work with many people of many backgrounds and many diversifications. I can prove that with my business out in the Gulf Coast. So with the hustle of the West Texas grit that I have of getting things done, I am able to work with many people across the board. One thing that I do know is you can get along with the county, but are you communicating with the county? Communication is built on everything that we should do. It should be our foundation, and currently, we are not.
So on the city council, you will be one of seven votes. So what are you particularly passionate about, and would you be willing to dissent if you felt it necessary? And we will start with you, Mr. Councilman Lad.
I'm sorry, the question was, what, is there something I'd be willing to dissent against?
Yes. Fight against if you felt passionate.
Sure. I mean, that dissent is a healthy part of being on city council. We do not want to have just one voice on city council. We don't want to always be voting seven to zero. In fact, just the other day, on Tuesday, we had a one-hour debate between the seven of us on a singular issue. So yes, I think dissent is very important. I'm passionate about dissenting with my fellow council members, but dissent does not mean disdain. It does not mean being rude. It means being kind, respectful, and understanding of the other person's perspective. And I'm willing to change my mind. When I was four years old, I thought brown cows made chocolate milk, but I got new facts, and after that, I changed my mind. So I'm always open to change my mind and have a good conversation with people.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
So yes, I do believe that there is appropriate, appropriate place for dissent. And one of the things that I know is I am ready for that role. I'm ready to go in there and be the voice of the constituents. My voice means nothing. When you elect me as your city council member, my voice goes away and 22,000 voices rise up, and that is something that we haven't seen lately. I have noticed that along our voting patterns, we have a group of voters that are on city council, they vote alike, they stay alike. And, and that's not what I want to do. I want to research everything that we're discussing. I want to have my hands in on everything that is being talked about. And right now, we currently have council members who are being exiled out of meetings because of the way they vote, and that's not okay. That's the part of dissent that we cannot do. We must work collectively together, and that's why I'm running.
Can I answer that really quick? I, I just want to clear, I don't know what she's talking about. I've never seen a council member exiled out of a meeting before, not since I've been on council. I've found that my fellow six council members work extremely, extremely well together. We have each other's cell phone numbers, we're friends. The mayor is the godmother of one of my children. So I think that our council, as it is, is, is very cooperative, and yes, dissent, but at the same time, I've never seen a council member kicked out of a meeting for a dissenting opinion.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Blank?
Question?
Yes. On the council, you'll be only one of seven votes. So first, what are you particularly passionate about, and would you be willing to dissent with your council colleagues if you felt it necessary?
Yes. Number one, no more expansions. I would not vote for expanded railways. I would not vote for city annexations. I would not vote for infrastructure where people don't already live. We need to focus on what we have now, okay? If you expand, you had to, you make more money for more stuff, ignoring what we have right here, so. That's it.
Thank you very much. Roads and infrastructure around Midland are suffering, but construction still a near constant. Do you see any particular problem areas within District Three specifically? And how would you, as a council member, ensure that District Three is a priority when it comes to road construction projects? Mrs. Williams, we'll start with you.
One of the things that we can know is that, we're just gonna look at Garfield, for example. Garfield took three years, yet we sat around for 10 months of those three years waiting for storm drains. Why was that? Other places were getting their infrastructure and their storm drains putting in. Were we waiting for just a specific person? We thought we had learned our lesson with A Street, which took, I feel like, 5,432 years to build and create. It is wonderful now, but we took the lowest bidder. Council said that they had learned their lesson and they weren't going to do it again. But had they really? Because we just repeated these same actions on Garfield. And I don't know if you've been down Garfield, but it's not the Yellow Brick Road. I do believe that we need to be spending our money wisely on these infrastructure. Every single one of the vendors that have put in a bill proposed, they need to be opened during council session. There needs to be an open meeting and not behind closed doors. We need to be making sure that we're hiring and facilitating local businesses to do our roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blank?
Can you repeat the question again?
Yes, I can. Roads and infrastructure around Midland are suffering with construction a near constant. Do you see any particular problem areas within District Three? And how would you, as a council member, ensure that District Three is a priority when it comes to further projects?
I want to prioritize maintenance, but also, I want to mention that it's extremely costly to even maintain our current roads. If I remember an estimate, the budget to, to maintain all the roads in the current level that we already have would be $72 million a year. Hopefully, Lad will correct me on that if I'm wrong. It was in a meeting. But one thing we can do to reduce our cost is road diets. It's where you, instead of expanding roads, you take some of it off, do narrow the roads, and that makes it safer, and it's less to maintain in the future.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lad?
Yes, I understand people's frustrations when it comes to how long it takes to build roads. Garfield, as an example. We were able to save the taxpayers $14 million by having city employees do a lot of the work there, but despite that, and despite the amount of time it took, it's a concrete road. It's not an asphalt road. It's the first of its kind in Midland. And a concrete road requires almost no maintenance. It might be your grandkids will be, might be the first people to see a construction crew on Garfield on that stretch of the road in the future. So I, oh, is that, is that a minute?
That didn't seem like a minute.
No, I think you got.
Didn't seem like a minute.
I think you have 30 more seconds.
Okay. So maintenance is zero, but I'm also excited about what we did on that project, what I was, got a lot of concerns about the roundabout on Cuthbert, and that has been a huge success for our community, and I hope that we can see further successes like that, cutting down traffic times and making people's lives easier and safer. We've filled 57,000 potholes since I've been on council, and we've increased maintenance expenses, which is fiscally conservative because maintaining a road is much cheaper than building one from scratch. Thank you.
Can I rebuttal for Garfield? So Garfield was a concrete road, but unfortunately, that concrete road is not smooth. So the wear and tear that it is on your shocks, your entire U-joints, the entire front suspension of your vehicle is going to cost taxpayers money that they shouldn't have to pay. I do understand that we did use city employees, which I am grateful for, trying to save that money, but in the long run, are we saving money or are we costing taxpayers more? That's the question I ask you.
The city has voted to lower tax rates three years in a row. There has been debate whether lowering the tax rate is enough, as it may not always result in lower taxes. With the city still carrying debt and spending set to outpace revenue by 2030, are lower tax rates the solution? And we'll start with you, Mr. Blank.
So ask the question again? Sorry.
Okay. The city has voted to lower tax rates three years in a row. There has been debate whether lowering the tax rate is enough, or it may not always result in lower taxes. With the city still carrying debt and spending set to outpace revenue by 2030, are lower tax rates the solution?
I want to, I think the solution is different tax rates, no, a different form of taxation. One of the problems with our tax system is that we tax the property on top of the land, you know? And what this does, it disincentivizes development. If you improve property, if you want to build something, you have to pay more. And this incentivizes people who speculate, who don't do anything in the land, and they can just write off the property, develop property off of their taxes. What we need to focus on is not higher or lower taxes, it's different types. And we should transition from property taxes to land value taxes, which we only, so we only tax the value of the land and nothing on top of it, no improvements. What this does is that it provides an incentive for people to, like, make the most of their land, and you can't just leave it blank. Because if you just have it there, you have to pay for it. You had to pay for it, you know, so.
Thank you. Councilman Lad?
Yes, thank you. Tax rates are, tax rates are decided by the city council. Tax valuations are decided by the Midland Appraisal District. So every year that I've been on city council, which is six years now, I voted to lower your property taxes. Now, one thing that we need to make clear is that the Midland City Council does not control the Midland Central Appraisal District or their valuations. But let's take for, let's take into consideration this year. We lowered property taxes again, and rates went up, but if you average them across the city, those rates add up to $7 per household per year. So while that is frustrating, we all hate, you know, high taxes, I think we also need to consider that Midland has the lowest taxes of all the communities in the surrounding area, and in some cases, by far. We're lower taxed, we have lower taxes than Odessa, San Angelo, Abilene, Lubbock, El Paso, Amarillo, the list goes on and on. So if you like low taxes, Midland is the city for you.
Thank you. And Ms. Williams?
So this is something I'm really passionate about, is if we're going to have transparency, we need to have transparency across the board. We lower the tax rate, however, we raise the appraisal value. No, they're not ran by the same entity, but we're getting the same cost to us. And since families don't talk on statistics and budgets, we talk on dollars and number amounts, I think it would be very interesting, when we actually look at the property tax value of Mr. Lad's home, it is $606,000 is his appraised value. However, he's only paying taxes on $353,000. He got a circuit break cap loss that I did not receive, or no one else in my neighborhood received, of $253,000. If we would go through and we would actually atomize what's going on in the appraisal district, we would be able to save taxes and appraisal values for our citizens.
Well, I guess I have to respond to that. I wish I, I wish my house was valued at $606,000.
For Midland.
And, and I don't know what she's talking about with a cap, but as far as that's concerned, I mean, I'm a regular citizen, I pay my taxes just like anybody else, and I don't own three or four homes like Ms. Williams does, so I wouldn't know about that. I guess that'd be more frustrating if you own three or four homes in the area. So as just a regular citizen, as a practicing attorney with my own law practice, I'm proud I own a home, but I don't think it's valued at that.
Thank you. Let's see. Next question.
In recent years, the Midland Animal Services Department, run by the city of Midland, has experienced high turnover. Going forward, what can be done to ensure that this is a healthy department and that the city can keep up with demand for our stray and abandoned animals? Councilman Lad, we'll start with you.
I, I'm pretty famous for my first year on council when we were on COVID and everybody was, was, you know, on the internet instead of meeting in person, and I had a Facebook post that got more attention than I anticipated when I said that if you, if you chain your dog up in the cold, well, maybe we should chain you up in the cold. I'm very passionate about animals. I've owned multiple dogs in my life. I have my dog Izzy. One of the biggest issues that we have at the Midland Animal Clinic is that we have had a hard time finding a, finding a vet to come to Midland, and we're working very diligently on that, and I hope we will in the future, but for now, it's a struggle. And we have increased our value, our pricing on a vet, we've increased the pay, and we're still looking, but we have some prospects coming in, and hopefully, we'll have more than one, but somewhere between three, four, or five vets.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
So animal control has a serious issue that is ongoing. They have been known for killing dogs by suffocating them with trash bags. It's completely inhumane. We've had directors who are fired, is that with good reason? Previous directors, multiple directors fired. Why are we firing all of these directors? Where are we pulling our directors from? What pool of candidacy do they come from? What is their background? We need to be partnering with Midland College just to have the veterinarians come out and check on these animals. We need to be partnering intercity on these issues. Not everything has to be an extensive, extensive amount of tax dollars to withhold the infrastructure within. And animal control is one of the things that, if we would actually have stronger and stricter guidelines for spaying and neutering animals, we wouldn't have the crisis that we currently have. As an animal advocate myself, I absolutely love animals, and I am just devastated by the issues that have gone on at animal control. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Blank?
So yeah, I'm improvising. Can you say, can you repeat the question?
Yes. What can be done to ensure that the Midland Animal Services Department is healthy?
Okay, so follow up with, like, animal services is that, the city can't do it alone. We need other, we need the community, we need all that, so we need multiple people. So I'm not saying that we have all the answers, and we can't do it all ourselves, but one step we can do is that maybe we should, instead of sharing an animal service department with Odessa. If I remember correctly how it works, this have one for Midland, so we can, it's more, it would be more, it might cost more money, but it would be more expedient to changes and be more effective, if I remember correctly.
What is your vision for Midland, looking 20 years into the future? When you picture our city in the year 2045, what does it look like? And please be specific. We'll start with you, Ms. Williams.
In the year 2045, I'd like to see unity. I'd like to see city working with county and making sure that we are one solid unit because we have to work together. If we don't, we're gonna fall apart. I want to see the children safe and secure. I want to see nonprofit organizations that are feeding into our youth flourish. I want to see the homeless coalition flourish. We have a very limited homeless population. We are blessed by that. There's approximately less than 60 homeless people. I was able to go out and visit with the homeless. I would love to see that there are no more homeless people, and we have got specific ways that we need to do that. But most importantly, I want to see my children's grandchildren enjoying and loving the city that I grew up in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blank?
What I want to say, I want a city that is accessible, that will be the most affordable in America, and that is the safest on America to be on the streets. What I want to say about homelessness is that, like, how we count homelessness matters a lot in how we see it. The 60 number is like the absolute homelessness, literally not having a shelter, but that doesn't include. But that doesn't include other hidden homelessness, people that are housing insecure, people that are couch surfing, moving around places that need a home, people that aren't even, there's a lot, and people renting out motels and temporarily in order to find a place to have, to stay. So homelessness, pure like shelterlessness is, might be rare, but it's only a fraction of the problem of housing insecurity. So.
And Councilman Lad?
Thank you. So as of today, the largest demographic in the city of Midland are children between the ages of zero to four years old. I've contributed to that. So I'm really happy of the direction that we're currently going in Midland. But if I was going to say, well, what, what do I want 2045 to look like? I would like to see those kids that are zero to four years old now still in Midland. And I think in order to do that, we have to provide young families opportunities to do fun things in town and to provide, feel like they're safe, such as having a Costco come to town, or in the future, having a Nordstrom's or, or a Trader Joe's or what have you. We need to have more things that are fun to do for young families. We need to have more activities like the Wildcat Trail so people can go outside and enjoy nature, like an I-20 nature preserve. And people need to feel safe. They need to have affordable housing, and they need to have low taxes. So I, my goal would be to retain Midlanders.
And it is now time for our closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for your closing statement. And again, we'll go in the order that you will be listed on the ballot. We'll start with you, Councilman Lad, two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to take this two minutes to list off some accomplishments that have happened while I've been on council. We've hired 33 new police officers in the last three to five years. We tackled what seemed to be an unsurmountable problem with the fire pension fund, saving taxpayers $60 million. Violent crime is down 10%. Water costs are lower, and we have 100 years of water security. We've taken projects like CRMWD contract that was 60 years old, renegotiated it, saving taxpayers $100 million. Roads, maintenance funding has been increased exponentially. 57,000 potholes filled. Todd Road overpass completed, Loop 250 completed. We've worked together with community partnerships, strengthening our ties with the county of Midland, with MISD, with the hospital, and others. Working together on, in the private sector for public-private partnerships and finding opportunities that the private sector can help our community grow and also not cost the taxpayers money. We've also gotten done the Beal Park Soccer Complex, 62 fields underway. Reyes Mashburn Knell, adding six tournament-ready fields. Doug Russell Aquatic Center, rebuilt and reopened. Playground renewal across the city and the Wildcat Trail. Permits that used to take months are now processed in days. See Click Fix closed over 9,000 citizen requests since July of 2024. Ask Jackie answers questions in seconds that used to take minutes or even an hour to get in touch with a city employee. Alert Midland delivers geofence updates on road closures, water outages, and emergencies right to your phone, using modern technology to make our lives better. And we did all of that while lowering your taxes every single year. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams, your closing statements.
So I want to thank Basin PBS and CBS 7 for having us and hosting us and just inviting a glimpse of who we are as candidates into your home. I really appreciate that. Now, one thing that I do want to remind every constituent out there in District Three and all of our districts is transparency. Transparency is so important. You know, some of the things that we've not discussed on today was the MDC project with the Omni Hotel. We're going to call it the Omni Hotel for city reasons, but it's actually known as the Midland Downtown Renaissance LP. Unfortunately, we had another proposal brought to the city, the Midland District Corporation, Midland, sorry, Midland Development Corporation. And that was from Insignia. They didn't want anything. They were willing to pay us for the land. However, we said, no, we'll take $45 million and hand it to the Midland Downtown Renaissance LP. And we'll build an 800 parking garage for $45 million of your tax dollars. I ask you, who do we represent in this deal? Is it the taxpayer? If you're wanting change and you want to be represented in every tax deal, I'm asking that you vote for me, Shandy Williams, for District Three. I'm passionate. I'm a fighter. I'm willing to get in there and get my hands dirty, and I'll be at every single meeting and every single attendance. I have the freedom to do so. And I just ask that you, as the constituents, ask, what are your concerns? And where do you want your voice heard? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Williams and Mr. Blank?
Yes, I would like to speak on the misuse of the NDC. The NDC is a state program, so people calling for it to be abolished or not used anymore, that money from the NDC and grants will be allocated to other cities. What I'm saying is that we should use the money more strategically to solve immediate needs such as housing. And we need to stop trying to invite businesses to come over, bribe them here, and start letting Midlanders make their own business in their own neighborhoods to send their own community, you know? If you want to start a corner store, if you want to start a business in your house, you can't. It's illegal. It's criminal. So that's what I would like to say.
Thank you. Well, with that, we conclude tonight's debate. I'd like to thank all of our candidates for participating in this year's Midland District Three City Council Debate. I can't thank you enough. I know that as campaigns go, it's always going to be stressful. It's always going to be a lot of sleepless nights, a lot of work. But I really appreciate, we both really appreciate you both, the three of you taking the time to spend it with us tonight and help our voters better understand the issues that are affecting your district. We urge all registered voters to cast your ballot. Early voting begins on Monday, October 20, and will continue until Friday, October 31. Please check the office for polling stations and hours of operations. Now, there's a change this year. There is no early voting on weekends, okay? Folks, I can't ask, I can't stress enough how important it is for us all to get out and cast our votes. The fact that we are engaged in our communities and we take the time to go to vote helps our communities be all that they can be in serving us and, and working for a better tomorrow. We'd also like to thank Diamondback Energy and the Bird Ranch for generously sponsoring tonight's program. We would also like to thank the Elizabeth Jaeger family and the Anwar family for their continued support of Basin PBS. Programs like this are possible because of you, our members and our viewers. If you aren't a member and would like to become one, please visit basinpbs.org for details. You know, I, I know that you've probably seen in the news lately that we no longer receive federal funding, okay? That means that this station every year now loses about $1 million in federal funding, okay? That money goes to producing programs such as this tonight. So I can't underscore enough how important it is, if you aren't a member, how important it is for you to become a member so we can continue to offer quality programs like this to our community with or without federal funding, okay? So with that, I'd also like to thank Basin, our Basin PBS Board, our hardworking and dedicated staff, and our crew for tonight's program. They go and put in countless hours to make sure these programs come off flawlessly, and they do a fantastic job. We can't thank them enough. Please join us on Thursday, October 16 at 7:00 PM for Hunger Has No Face, a West Texas Food Bank documentary produced by Basin PBS. I'm Pat Canty. On behalf of Basin PBS and my co-moderator, Mary Kate Hamilton with First Alert 7, thank you and good night.